Hi, seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the Wednesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Mashpee Planning Board, being held here at Mashpee Town Hall in the Wacoia Meeting Room, sixteen Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Massachusetts. Time being seven o'clock. We're being recorded and live broadcast on local channel eighteen and streamed live on Town of Mashpee website, I would like to start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all rise and join with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which is very public, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to table all the minutes at this time. We'll just put them on the next agenda, except for the March eighth minutes, which was our site visit. So that should go, that should go on the agenda when we open up the public hearing on that matter, which is South Worth, Willow Bend. Okay. So we have a few minutes until our seven-ten public hearing. I'd like to approve Ed Pesci's invoices for November.
Go, B.
So there's an invoice, twenty-two, twenty-three dash two oh seven six for a hundred and sixty dollars. Invoice twenty-two thirty-two oh seven five for five hundred and forty-nine dollars. The first one is for the hundred and sixty dollars is for review of project notes and prep for a planning board hearing. The five hundred and forty-nine dollars is for travel and site visit with Scott Miller and son. Oh, Willow, Willow Circle, sorry. Project location Willow Circle. Engineering Peer Review and Construction Inspection Services. Third invoice, twenty-two thirty-three dash two oh seven four for six hundred and eighty-four dollars and forty-eight cents. And the project location is Country Club Estates Construction Inspection Services. Invoice twenty-two thirty-three dash oh, I'm sorry, two oh seven three for one thousand two hundred and forty dollars. The project location is Tudor Terrace Engineering and Peer Review Services. Invoice number twenty-two thirty-three, twenty-seventy-two for nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-six cents. The project is Sherman Williams Route one fifty-one, Engineering Peer Review and Construction Inspection Services. And the last one is twenty-two thirty-three dash twenty-seventy-seven for one thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and twenty-four cents. The project is Seventeen Silver Leaf Lane Construction Inspection Services. So move?
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Ed, for all that hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. Under Old Business, just really quick, zoning bylaw amendments proposed for twenty, May, two thousand and twenty-three town meeting. In your packet is a draft public hearing notice. And the date is going to be the public hearing. We voted to have a public hearing at seven-ten on all zoning articles on Wednesday, April nineteenth. At seven-ten, it's going to be here in this room. So there's a draft public hearing notice. I think it looks fine. And that was my only announcement. We are going to be in front of the Board of Selectmen on Monday. Hopefully, they'll get to the, their warrant, where this is part of it. And we'll be there to hopefully make a quick presentation. The solo bylaws are so long. I think it's okay to have a PowerPoint presentation to them. I haven't really confirmed that. But anyways.
March twentieth.
It's March twentieth, yeah. And Evan did post an agenda, right? Did you post it yet?
I haven't posted it yet.
Okay. Well, it's going to be posted, so feel free to come. We can be in quorum in the room. And Evan, you're coming, right?
Yes, I am.
And Karen and I, as Chair and Vice Chair, are presenting with everybody's vote. So how quickly can you do LCP?
Pretty quickly. I, I think it's, the, the time is coming where we need to reconvene to discuss the proposed, or the draft chapters at this point in comparison to the survey results and the findings of the community engagement work. I did unload a, a number of summaries from some outstanding workshops. I think there's one remaining from the business coffee hours we held. But I'm, I think Ashley and I are eager to figure out when we can get that next step accomplished. So is there anything outstanding for me?
Did you, did you get me that virtual? Did you, were you able to send me?
I had to, I had to render the video, so that's one outstanding item, which is done. But I probably won't be able to transmit it to you over email. I'll probably need to put it on a flash drive.
Did you give us a link?
I can figure out how to post it.
Okay, I thought you said, all right. So that's the last thing.
You do not have that video yet.
Okay.
But you have the, the summary of the meeting notes, but not the video of the meeting.
Yeah, I think in Zoom, you can download all the comments that people put in. Is that what you're trying to do?
Well, I had to download the recorded meeting video, and then I'll have to take screenshots of the, because we don't, we didn't do blackboards. We didn't, we, in a nutshell, I need to render the video and edit some screenshots. But, but you have, again, the written notes from the, from the meeting.
So we have a few more minutes. So we're not meeting April fifth, because it's past. Okay? So our next meeting is April nineteenth. There's at least one public hearing. Is there something else on that night, April nineteenth?
Nothing for nineteenth, other than our zoning article public hearings. Unless the two seventy-five quintiquisted public hearing, which will reopen on the twenty-ninth, could potentially be continued to that date. But there's nothing currently scheduled.
Oh, you're right. So our next meeting is March twenty-ninth. We're having a special meeting.
For Willow Bend, yeah.
Okay, and that's at seven-ten. All right. I see. So the pub, all right. So do, do you think that we'll be able to have, do you want to have Weston and Sampson join us on the nineteenth? Or?
I'm, well, I, I'm confident that if they're available, they would like the opportunity to kind of do that next round of review with you. Or we can look further into May.
May third or May seventeen?
And we can discuss kind of the findings. We can refine where we're at and make a presentation to Weston and Sampson thereafter. I'm really kind of looking for your direction on this, but, because I'm uncertain of their availability.
My suggestion would be to wait after the town meeting and go May seventeen.
See if they'll pencil us in for the seventeen.
Will do.
And then you want to meet with, but you want to have a discussion with us before?
Yeah, I think that's prudent.
All right, see if they'll pencil.
We should, for sure.
All right, so let's, let's, um, can everybody come on the twenty, uh, March twenty-ninth?
When is it?
March twenty-ninth. It's a special Wednesday.
Willow Bend.
It's Willow Bend, South Worth. And it's a, here's the deal. John, you missed one meeting already, so you can't miss another one. Or else you won't be able to vote, you won't be able to sit and vote, which means they only get four votes, and so.
I'll have to move some things around for the twenty-ninth.
If you, if you can't make it on the twenty-ninth, what we do is we tell the applicant. And on the twenty-ninth, we just instantaneously continue it. Do you know what I mean? So we want to make sure that you are going to be able to make all of them.
Madam Chair, I don't know if this helps, but six months ago, I scheduled a family vacation that week. I get granddaughters and everything. I was planning to join via Zoom, but I won't be here in person that night.
I think that's fine.
Okay. And obviously, I'd need to have revised plans from Baxter and I to have time to review them ahead of time. But if they're, if you're not going to do the twenty-ninth, obviously, I'm really happy about that. But they might even be happy about having a couple extra weeks to work on the plan. So something to think about.
I'll know by the end of the week.
Excellent. All right, good. So don't let us forget that, Evan. Okay. Yes. Seeing that the appointed time a lot, has arrived, the chair opens up the seven-ten public hearing. The applicant is Marcelo Magla, Magne, Malygney, sorry, Forest Road LLC, five thirty-two Main Street, MAP twenty-six Block six. The applicant requests consideration for approval of a nine-lot definitive subdivision plan of land consisting of eighteen point oh five acres, located on Main Street Route one thirty, between Nicoletta's Way and Echo Road. So I would like to start by acknowledging and welcoming the project proponent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant in this case. I did submit a request for a continuance of tonight's hearing to May seventeenth for two reasons. One is, you know, the last meeting we were at, we agreed to do, to move forward with the traffic study. For whatever reason, it took me till today to get my client to pay the money. But a check for thirteen thousand dollars has been deposited with the Board or with, with Evan to allow that traffic study to be, that process to be started and initiated. You know, I think we talked about it being about a six-week process. So I've asked for that, that sixty days for that purpose. Also, you know, the Board has also, you know, suggested along the way that we, you know, continue to try to engage with the, the owners of Nicoletta's Way. We did, there was a letter submitted to counsel for Nicoletta's Way today as well to try and reengage them on, you know, a potential solution that would not involve creating a new subdivision road. So based on those two factors, I was hoping, you know, humbly requesting that the Board grant me this one contin, one more continuance. I think at this stage of the game, we're at a point where we're fishing or cutting bait. We've done the two things. You know, the traffic study is going to give the Board the knowledge that it needs to make an informed decision. I think traffic is really kind of the big issue on this project. So, you know, with that, again, I'd, I'd request the continuance. Thank you.
Okay. So it's May seventeenth.
Seven-ten.
Yep, seven-ten. I, I, we might want to look at our schedule again for that, because we just said that we were going to have Weston and Sampson come down. So we might need to start like at six o'clock that night with Weston and Sampson, instead of doing Weston and Sampson afterwards.
Yeah.
Because we usually, you know.
Madam Chair, one other thing that I know Chris knows, he also administratively, for the record, requested officially an extension of your time to, to make a decision.
Yes, that's correct. I know that we're probably coming up on the date on the constructive approval. So I know that's a, a sensitive issue. So I've requested that, on behalf of the applicant, to extend that deadline, so there's no issue with the Board about any type of constructive approval.
Okay, so great, great. So in the letter, thank you very much, Ed. Yep, it says, I would ask that the hearing on the subdivision plan be continued to May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to allow the traffic study to be completed. Additionally, on behalf of the applicant, I hereby request a ninety-day extension of the hundred and thirty-five day time period. The Board has to file its decision on the definitive subdivision plan with the Town Clerk. Thank you very much. Okay, so is there a motion?
Go, B.
So we're going to ex, continue this hearing until seven-ten on May seventeenth? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
So we've got another five minutes. Yeah, so you get back to scheduling. May seventeenth, can we start at six o'clock? Or should we start at five-thirty?
Why don't you tend to put six? I still need to confirm Weston and Sampson's availability, so.
See if they can start at five-thirty, and then we confirm with everybody, because then we can give it a good, solid hour with Weston and Sampson, and then get into this public hearing at seven-ten. They don't, if they think we need more time than that, then we should probably do a workshop meeting on a separate day. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think, I think that, when I, when we meet with Weston and Sampson next, I think it's really important that we've gotten to a point of being close to, you have been reaching general consensus relative to the findings, so that they are taking your final information to produce final drafts, as opposed to having them back, unloading on them without much. I, I, what I'm asking the Board to do is do the work between now and when they appear next. And if I can be any resource to individually in my office or in a meeting regularly from now until mid-May, I, I think that's important.
So we need to schedule every afternoon from four to seven for the next six weeks.
That's right.
Okay. I'll see you then.
All right.
All right. Affordable and workforce housing, anything on the ADU workshop, the Housing Production Plan or the region, the Cape Cod Commission Regional Housing Strategy?
HPP workshop's influx is what I'll call it, it's influx.
Oh, yeah.
HPP is advertised. It's been gone out to the, a few consultants who do this work in our area. We've received some indications that people will be responding, and we're holding a pre-submission conference on, actually, Wednesday, March twenty-ninth. I believe at two PM via Zoom.
I'm sorry. So what's that meeting about?
That's the pre-submission meeting for potential consultants to ask questions.
A housing consultant?
Yeah.
Sorry. That's great. And anything from the Cape Cod Commission on the regional housing strategy?
No. Nothing to my office.
All right, so I will try to remember to, to email Christie Senatori. All right. I think the Clean Water Initiative you're going to cover under your planner's report. Right?
Sure.
And Ed, anything real quick for, we have three minutes, project reviews and inspections?
So we're, we're up to date with project reviews. I actually am doing another new project review for the zoning board, small project, Andy's Market addition. We are also in the process of taking care of a field survey to do it out, brief, limited elevation survey at, at New Seabree Villages, excuse me, Cottages Phase Three.
Okay.
Confirm if there's a problem with the way it was originally constructed in terms of grading. It's the only way to confirm, compare what's there, what was originally approved. So we're going to shut basically down the center line of the road and the sides of the road, just to see if it's close to what was originally approved. I imagine it will be, but that's the only way I can confirm whether the road construction had anything to do with the issues with the grading around all the houses. Okay, so we're actually doing that either Monday or Tuesday. We get that scheduled. Lastly, I did.
Is that because of water flooding and stuff like that? Okay.
Yeah, the, the top of foundation for many of the houses is, is very close, and the trim on the outside of the house is very close to the outside grade.
And it needs six inches.
Or touching, in some cases, apparently. The other thing is Sherwin-Williams. I wrote a final, God, I want to say it was a couple weeks ago, right, Evan?
A final punch list on a couple of things that needed to be done. And some of them involve some new items that I hadn't previously listed, because when we went out there to look at what they had done, there were some things that they hadn't done as well. Anyway, today, this afternoon, we got an email from the developer on corrective actions for ninety percent of those things. I briefly looked at them, Evan. I scanned the, the pictures real quick. It looks like they've addressed everything except the sand and sediment in the bottom of the detention basin, which I want them to remove. But other than that, there's really no, I mean, I'm sure that the grass will grow in and things will look, look better. I just got to do a quick flyby there to take a look at it. And that's all I'll need to do. But other than that, nothing else to add, except that I did visit the site today with Jacques Morin to talk about some options going forward at Aquay Highlands.
Good. Thank you. Okay, so seeing that the appointed time has arrived, the chair opens up the seven-twenty public hearing. Pleasant Homes LLC, twenty Tudor Terrace, MAP twenty, Block one ninety-eight. The applicant requests approval of a modification of Spring Hill West definitive subdivision plan of land that would modify the lots, the line lots of lots forty, forty-one, and forty-two to give adequate frontage for three new building lots proposed for incorporation into the subdivision. The three proposed lots to be created and incorporated into the cluster division run the parcel of land totaling six point oh two four acres. This proposal will continue the cluster configuration of the existing subdivision and will add two point four nine acres of open space, consistent with the requirements of the Mashpee zoning bylaw at the time of cluster subdivision's approval in nineteen eighty-nine. So I'd like to recognize the project proponent.
Good evening again, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Attorney Christopher Corain. I submitted a letter to request a withdrawal without prejudice. Given the procedural questions that have been raised and just trying to kind of clean, you know, make a distinction between the, the new land and the old land, we're just going to come, we're going to come before the Board with a clean plan that only, doesn't touch any lot lines on the existing subdivision, so.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, so I think we've shown a preliminary to Evan. We're in talks with the Fire Department, so I think we'll be able to come up with a, a plan that just deals with the six acres under your cluster subdivision bylaw. So, and taking into account some of the things that have been raised, we're trying to be sensitive to those things. So that's what we're planning on doing.
Okay.
And we had, you know, withdrawing the existing special permit just made, it kind of made sense just to restart anew.
Okay. I, I, I always feel bad when, you know, I ask those tough questions.
No, that's all right.
Okay, all right.
That's your, that's your job.
Okay.
Not a problem.
So yes, so the chair acknowledges the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three letter from Chris Corain regarding Pleasant Homes LLC. It is requested that the applicant be permitted to withdraw their application to modify and improve cluster subdivision plan, Spring Hill West definitive subdivision plan, without prejudice. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move close the public hearing first.
I take a, I take, I take a, I'd accept a motion to close the seven-twenty. Is there anybody from the public that would want to comment on this matter? Okay, seeing no comments.
Make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Is everybody in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Take a motion to with, allow the application to be withdrawn without prejudice? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Everyone say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Have a great night. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so new business and I, I didn't tell Ed in, come on up, Mr. Moran. I didn't tell Ed and Evan this, but I kind of wanted them to start off the conversation, if that's okay with you. Okay, so the new business is a declaration of default. Aquay Highlands Tripartite Agreement dated March twenty, two thousand and nineteen. It's not technically a public hearing, but I will allow public comment. So this is what I'm thinking of doing. I'm going to let our town engineer or the town planner start, whoever wants to start. I know Evan has a lot of information for us. I know Ed has a lot of information for us. Then I was going to recognize Jack Moran from Aquay Highlands, and then anybody from the public could, you know, join the discussion at that point. And I like to do that just because I think a lot of your questions will get answered by our town engineer, excuse me, our board engineer, our town planner, and the contractor. Okay, does that sound okay with everybody? Okay, so we're hearing a lot of none. So Ed or, or Evan, either one of you can start.
I think I'll just lay out the last six months of history or so just to lay the groundwork for your discussion, and then I suppose pass it off to Ed. I know Ed met with Jacques on site today. But we, you, you permitted Aquay Highlands before I came town planner five years ago. Subsequent, though, to my appointment, we entered into, you entered into a tripartite agreement with Jacques as developer of Aquay Highlands as security for completion of the, of the subdivision and the requisite roadway facilities and infrastructure. My off, my office received earlier this year, perhaps the end of two thousand and twenty-two, some regular complaints, some about traffic, some about drainage. The traffic issues are notably about signage and things like that that are contained in the permit that are adequately secured by the tripartite agreement and also require a petition of the neighborhood to initiate action in that regard. So our focus was generally around the drainage issues. My office had received some videos and some photographs of some drainage ponding, I guess you would call it, at various sites in, within the subdivision. I had the opportunity to investigate that a little bit during periods of rainfall. I've also had the opportunity to discuss these issues with, with Ed, and we both met on site with Jacques on more than one occasion to come up with solutions in the short and midterms. And so bringing us to today, not long ago, I was asked by another local developer if I had a template for a tripartite agreement, and the only one we currently maintain is the one with Aquay Highlands. So I used that as a basis for reference, which gave me an opportunity to review that agreement. And within that agreement contained a couple of conditions for the security, and one was that the developer would make annual reports relative to progress. And the other was that the completion of the subdivision would occur by April first. I'll say April two thousand and twenty-two, because I'm not certain of the exact date. So I felt it prudent to invite Jacques in for a discussion with you at your meeting, I suppose, of, of.
March first.
March first. I, Jacques had agreed to appear to the meeting. We, but however, Jacques was unable to appear. He did meet with me prior to his not appearing before the Board. I had indicated to him that it was an informal meeting and that a written update would likely be adequate. He did submit a written report and update to the Board, which you saw on March first. However, you felt that there were concerns outstanding relative to the drainage issue that where you felt it prudent to obtain counsel's opinion relative to exercising your rights within that tripartite agreement, which I had done. I noticed, I sent a written notice to Jacques of tonight's meeting for your discussion relative to a declaration of default of that agreement. Jacques provided a written response to your meeting of March first, which is also in your packet. And so I think the, the major issues that the Board needs to discuss and that Ed can, can expand on, I'm sure Jacques can as well, it's, it's the, it's the fact that the, the base coat of pavement is down on the portion of Blue Castle Drive at the top of the subdivision street that intersects with Carriage Road. And based on my observations and confirming with Ed, it's, it's clear that the grading of that base coat is such that the stormwater runoff is, is, is navigating around the storm drains and not actually entering the, the, the system and ending up down at the westerly portion of Blue Castle Drive and ponding at the end of that subdivision street in front of eighty-six Blue Castle Drive. So the question, Ed and I met on site to, to review this. Ed was very, very clear that this is something that could be satisfied, solved with the top coat of pavement and adequate grading of that top coat. So when we first met with Jacques, that was the plan. We're going to focus on the top coat. The question, when it came back to March first, was, you know, how, how long will it be before the top coat goes on? So how long essentially is the neighborhood going to need to endure a non-functional stormwater collection system? And so that's, that's the question that we're at today. I know Ed met with Jacques on site today. I think that's the, the general summary and synopsis of the, you know, short-term history, six months ago till now, which brought us to tonight. And with that, I'll, I'll hand it off to Ed to discuss some of the technical issues.
Okay, thanks, Evan. So I did meet with Jacques this morning. We had a productive meeting, I thought. And did you, you're looking at photos, you're looking at old photos that Evan.
Do you want to go through these photos?
No, Evan put those together. I, I, I remember looking at them, but I haven't gone through them. But that's essentially the area, it's in, in the area, and I know this is hard without a overhead, but there's an area of two lots at the end of Blue Castle Drive. So Blue Castle Drive comes off of Great Neck Road South, right? And heads all the way to a transition to the old part of the subdivision. But before it gets there, two lots before that end of, of his, of his subdivision, there's a.
But before it gets there, two lots before that end of his subdivision, there's a right-hand turn on Carriage Road. So most of you know what I'm talking about, the site. So there's two lots on the left-hand side, two houses, two developed lots on the left-hand side after the intersection of Carriage Road. And that's where some of the, some of the drainage issues that Evan described, just so that I'm making sure Evan's words are correct. Not all the catch basins are exhibiting that problem, only the area, the two catch basins in that area in front of lots nine and 10. We've talked about it in the field. Like I said, I think I thought that develop, adjusting grade and directing flow towards those catch basins in the future will correct all that and solve quite a bit of the problem. You know, the drainage problem in front of lots nine and 10 are the majority of the complaints that Evan has heard. I would, I would have to say that. The family next door. The family next door also does not have roof drain, downspout roof drains, dry wells for the roof drains, so their runoff contributes to the problem as well. But, and in the case of Mr. Moran, all of his houses have roof drains with subsurface dry wells, so that the roof drains don't continue to contribute that. We're at the point now where lot nine is completed and there is grass and landscaping. Lot 10 is not completed, it's about two months away, and landscaping is about to happen. This is the season for that landscaping to happen. And I imagine it'll, it'll certainly attenuate some of that. And what I asked, essentially what I, what I talked about with Evan, and then I banged around a little bit this morning with Jacques was, you know, what are you willing to do to help correct this? And he's willing to listen to what the board would like, but I would like to make this recommendation, that in front of building of lots nine and 10, that the final paving be actually executed this spring. Now, he actually even looked at, and to his credit, Jacques has actually spoken to Lawrence Lynch Corporation, the paving contractor, subcontractor of his, and he wanted to try to get it done sooner than later, and they advised him not until the weather warms up a bit, you know, want to be in the 50s most of the time. Whenever I'm at the end of the season in November, I always tell contractors when I'm doing inspections, you got to have three nights, at least two or three nights of non-freezing weather, so that when you wake up the next morning, everything isn't all frozen, and that you're not going to get the paving to adhere or to cure well enough. It'll cure too fast. So I support that, let's wait till it gets a little bit warmer. So the first thing that I thought was, was pretty well thought out is that Mr. Moran actually went yesterday during a storm event and took his own pictures of what's going on there. He also did some studious redirecting of flow with some straw wattles and some erosion controls to see if he could direct water and see how it went and see what accumulated. Basically, direct water, I think you can see the black in that picture, and I'll send these around, direct water towards, towards the catch basins that aren't getting water, just so he could see how it would work. And I thought that was pretty admirable of him to do that, because that's exactly the kind of thing you would want to do to show what's ponding and show the contractor what he needs to fix, so he understands as a general contractor and developer what he needs to correct. He's already making plans now that he knows and can see this, has pictures of this, of painting orange striping where that ponding is. So we know where the problem area is, I can be on site when that's being corrected, and that can be corrected. So I would venture to say that 75% of the issues that have come up are concerns that I've mentioned and that Evans had to deal with have to do with this drainage in front of lots nine and 10. I think that that drainage can be addressed by doing paving and doing finished paving and ending that finished paving at the intersection at a seam somewhere approximately 180 feet. I just pasted off with Jacques this morning, approximately 180 linear feet of pave. Okay, so that's all, that, in my opinion, is a good recommendation. To his credit, he's willing to pave the entire length of Blue Castle Drive, because the rest of it's done too, if the board so decides. It's going to take some traffic from the extra, two more houses to go, Jacques?
Three.
Three, sorry, three more houses to be built on Carriage Road. So I wouldn't necessarily recommend that, but it's not the end of the world. I think to his credit, he's willing to do that, and that's fine too. But at the minimum, I think it's reasonable to get that first 180 feet knocked out, get it done. The second thing I asked Jacques to do this morning was something that I asked in a previous inspection memo or email, and that is to take care of now, the season's about to happen, right? It's March 15th. By April 15th, every landscaper out there is going to be looming and seeding something, okay? Because they're, they're all backed up, and some of them are going to start April 1st. So I said, would you please loam and seed, re-loam and seed your detention basins for the areas that haven't taken yet and not really well established? It's pretty easy to see what's dirt and what's not. And he's actually agreed to do that in the corner at Carriage Road and Blue Castle Drive, where currently there's a small pile of mulch, but that's part of the open space that's been, you know, that's at that intersection, and when it's not grassed up and not preventing runoff from being held onto the property in the open space area, it's also dumping it onto the road, so it's adding to part of the issue. But overall, he had good erosion control materials in place today. He had erosion control materials and indoor silt sacks in every catch basin and is willing to try to work with the board. So I know the board has an opinion about this, and I want you to voice your opinion to Mr. Moran, but I just wanted you to know that it seems like a reasonable method or reasonable compromise to get the seeding done, to get the first 180 feet of paving done, so that we have some kind of, you know, way forward. And to address keeping this on track, I would recommend that you ask Mr. Moran to come back every six months, not every year, to come back and talk to the board so that we can stay on top of it as a group. And I'm sure he'd be grateful for that too, to just stay on top of it, not have it go away. But that's just my recommendation, I'll leave it up to the board.
I'd like to go to Jacques.
I think it's reasonable.
Yep, is that okay? If we go right to Jacques, do you have anything else to add to that?
No, Jacques Moran for Aquay Highlands. Madam Chair, I think the two prior speakers summed it up very nicely. I am certainly willing to do as recommended on the paving in front of lot nine and 10 and the road shoulders seeding all as soon as the plant's open, which I suspect not that long from a timing perspective, and seeding the roadway edges to help control the, any sedimentation.
Does any board member have any questions?
I guess, yeah, I would like to know when. I mean, we want it done as soon as possible, if you're going to do that.
I was going to do it before this meeting, but I was advised not to.
I think that was.
I mean, I guess I'm saying, the minute we get some nice weather, it should be done.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Give us a date.
Yeah, should we have a drop dead date?
Yeah, I think rather than pick a date, I'd rather have you have a performance-based, Madam Chair, like within 60 days. That's plenty of time to get it done, and the weather will be better. It's now March, it'll be May in 60 days. So by May 15th, I think that's not a bad determination. I think that's, as long as Mr. Moran has no problem with that, I don't see any problem with that. And more than likely will get done earlier, because I know he's anxious to get it done, but it's up, that's up to the board.
Can you come on May 17th? I'll put you on first.
I actually need to check that.
So we would say no later than May 15th?
Yeah.
Right, if it can happen sooner, it'll happen sooner.
Well, you would say no later than May 17th, since that's a Wednesday, that's fine.
Fine.
That would work.
Okay, so you either show us, give us evidence, photos that it's done, or you come here in person and explain why it's not done? How is that?
Is that an either/or?
Yes.
Okay, can do.
If it is done, Jacques, you'll be talking to me and I'll come and report to the board.
Yes.
Is there anybody from the public? Oh, Dennis, did you, I'm sorry, Dennis, let's have Dennis.
On Blue Castle, how many more houses do you have to build? It's either the last one should be in.
So there are one, two, three in final completion, two of which need landscaping.
All right. But actually put the foundation in on Blue Castle.
There's no more foundations to go in, Dennis.
I'd like to see that whole road done then, because it's all, you've got two more houses on Carriage Road or three.
Three.
It's not that much traffic going over there, because I live in the neighborhood and with empty lots, and they come in and build a house, and it's not like you're starting from brand new. So that's one thing. And the swales down at the end, near the grass road, the two swales on the right-hand side, the first one, I went by it yesterday, and the water wasn't drained, draining real well in that.
Could you just explain, be more specific, the swales down at the end, which end?
Could you come out, come out Blue Castle?
Yeah.
You take a right on Carriage Road.
On Carriage Road, okay.
And you go down to the end.
At the end of Carriage Road?
Where the, yeah, where the affordable house was built.
Yeah.
Those two swales.
Yeah.
One was filled up, it wasn't draining, and one closest to where the piles always were, there was no water into that. So I like before, I like you to check that.
We'll take a look at that, I'll take a look at that, at the end of Carriage Road, on the right, on the left and right, there are swales there.
Ever since they've been building there, those piles were never taken care of. Every once in a while, they put some, you know, bags up, sandbags, and stop the runoff, but a lot of times, they didn't stop the runoff. I want to make sure we check all the drainages in that, that system before we go.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So I would like to stay with the recommendation, but visit what you're indicating in terms of the entirety. There have been a few, actually, all of the neighbors asking me to speak to the board. I don't want to have that tonight, this discussion about the sidewalks. They prefer not to have the sidewalks because they lead to nowhere. And I don't think this is the appropriate time to talk about it. But my thought the other day was just to do the whole entire Blue Castle Drive. I'd kind of like to see where that might go, and then it might be appropriate to revisit that, maybe even at the May 17th meeting.
I think if you want to, if you want to remove the sidewalks, I think that's an amendment.
Yes.
Minor modification, right?
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be a minor modification of your subdivision approval?
It could be.
With the tripartite agreement, I don't know if that messes it up.
No, but, but I think since this neighborhood is so engaged, I think I would ask for it to be a public hearing. Do you know what I mean?
So you would, Madam Chair, you'd have the applicant requested in writing so it could be publicly noticed?
However, however, you, you apply for a modification, I would, I would support it being a public hearing, just because I know the neighborhood is very engaged. And yes, you tell me that the neighbors have approached you, saying they don't want the sidewalks, and that neighborhood, yes, there have been places where I thought it should have gone one way, and they thought it would go another, and we've listened very carefully to that neighborhood, so.
Want to order?
Yes, sir.
Before we decide, the board's going to decide if it's a minor or a major.
Yes.
Modification. And if the board decides it's a minor one, it's not a public.
Right, and then usually you go right then and there at that meeting. But if the board decides that it's a public hearing, then you have to do the public notice and come back, like, I don't know, four to six weeks later.
Correct.
Yeah.
So sometimes it's just worth to do the public hearing notice.
I can discuss that with you in some detail, though, process-wise.
Okay, sure.
All right, so any more comments from board members before I ask the public for comment?
Yes, hi, Mr. Moran, Karen Faulkner here. I looked at the tripartite agreement, and the completion date was supposed to be for all the construction, April 1, 2022, I believe. Did you ever get a continuance on this or request?
So, no, and that was during, still during the time of COVID, and I think I opined in the email that I had sent that I was of the opinion that, through discussion with others, that all such permitting was told, if you will, for 462 days by way of the governor's actions and the legislature's actions on, which included planning boards permitting and the work under those permits, which would effectively put the work to sometime in July, this coming July is the need to be completed.
Does anyone know if that is true?
I do.
You do?
I did seek a legal opinion on the assertion, if it's okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Counsel opined that because the governor's executive order specifically told development permits and conditions of permits and anything that would lapse prior to the closure. Sorry, my phone's listening to me. Counsel agreed on that portion of Mr. Moran's assertion, that the, because you actually modified the permit and assigned a specific timeline as a condition of that permit, that the dates within that permit would toll accordingly, as asserted by Mr. Moran. He, however, did note that the obligation to report to you annually was not a condition of the permit, and the lack of performance thereunder would enable you, should you vote, vote to find the agreement in default, you could. But he did support Mr. Moran's assertion in that, in that, the tolling component.
It tolls, if we concur.
I understand.
Right, it tolls to like July 2023.
All right, so let's assume it tolls, we'll go for that for you, July 2023. All right, so we need to have some definite rules here. Within 60 days, he needs to loam and seed the retention spaces.
There's not agreement on the board at this point about whether we're going to require, I think that there's agreement on that. I don't think there's agreement right now whether we should require the 180 linear feet only or the entire Blue Castle Drive.
I think he should do the entire Blue Castle Drive.
You said something different than I did, but maybe we can hear from the neighbors and then discuss that point.
Just a point.
And then we have to talk about the top coat.
That's the top coat.
Yeah, the entire.
Yep, yes.
Just a point of question, Madam Chair, if in fact it is told until July, requiring that portion, additional portion to be done within 60 days and prior to that timeframe, I'm just, I'm a bit confused.
Right, we haven't gotten there yet. We haven't gotten there yet.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I did ask Mr. Moran to think about, well, when are you going to be finished? You've got three more houses to go, that's the date, April 1, 2022, is when all the houses are supposed to be done. And they're not all done, he won't have them done by July. So we need, you need to consider that. May not have to decide all that tonight, may only want to hit a piece of it at a time. He can maybe come back and tell you what he thinks his estimated schedule will be on May 17th, what it might be. But that's something I think you should all agree on and formally amend or administratively amend, I don't know which one works, the tripartite agreement, to a different date.
And if it's okay, I do want to be very clear that counsel's opinion supported the assertion of the tolling relative to the conditions of the permit. But he specifically asserted and pointed out the condition that the developer return annually to provide reports, and his lack of performance under that condition would provide you the opportunity, should you vote to do so, to declare default of the.
That the agreement doesn't toll.
Correct, because that's not.
But the special permit does.
The annual reporting is a tripartite, a condition of a contractual agreement, not a condition of a special permit.
Would have to be put on the agenda for that, I suppose, as well.
It's on the agenda tonight.
Yeah, no, previously. It's okay, it's all right.
So anybody from the neighborhood, anybody from the public would like to comment? So do you understand what's going on? And, you know, you can stay there, I think, I think they're comfortable coming right up to the table and speaking.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to, like, the acoustics in here aren't the best, so.
Sorry.
So I have some pictures as well, and I, I know you're discussing the length of Blue Castle.
Excuse me, could you for the record state your name and your address?
I got to start there, I'm sorry. My name's Terry Ronhock, and I'm at 104 DeGrasse Road, but my property also abuts the end of Blue Castle, so I'm a concerned neighbor at the end of Blue Castle. And so I'm just trying to clarify some of the points that were made. So you're talking about the top coat for the Blue Castle, which I know some of the neighbors that have had concerns about that end of Blue Castle. But, and I know you brought up earlier, I think Mr. Dennis brought up, the issue with the. I know you brought up earlier, I think Mr. Dennis brought up, the, the issue with the Carriage Road where it connects to DeGrasse Road. That has become a serious problem. And I, I have some pictures of that flooding at that end. Because that, you know, that Habitat house that we have in the corner there that was, that was put up as part of the development has lovely families. And there's lovely families along there. And so those kids use that end of, you know, they go up and down that, as do the residents that have already moved into Blue Castle. And it, it is a serious flooding issue there.
You can pass them this way.
Yeah. And so some of the other concerns that we have, and I know these concerns don't necessarily apply to the planning board, but I think they raise concerns that the neighbors and the residents have about the, you know, the respect for the neighborhood and what's happened. I know it's been brought to the board before about open, open pits and areas where the road has been left open. You know, there's several times when I've walked down there and not even realized that there was a, was an opening. And I think some of those. But there is currently an open area there with wires exposed. I believe it's still, it's still, as of today, open there with wires.
That would be a service trench from the edge of the roadway at the pedestal to the house. And that's waiting for the electrician to put the wire in the sleeves and inspection. It's about 30 inches in depth.
Right. And I believe it's been open for over a week. But, so some of the problems, and I'm sure the engineer is aware of this, is that the, you know, the, the hay bales along the front of some of those houses, because this is construction that's been going on for years. They've deteriorated. And so the sand is washing from those open lots into the road, because those have not been replaced. And so you can see from some of the pictures, the deterioration of that, that blocking that should be keeping the construction area from running into the road. The other thing is that in the open space area, there is huge amounts of construction debris. And so we're not talking about weeks or even months. This has been years of this, this area's been like this. The construction debris pile continues to grow and grow. And so people are walking by, it's like you're, you're walking, not even, I wouldn't even say the, the town landfill, because that's really a lot neater than this area. And you can see it's, it's landscaping materials, it's wood. So like I said, it's, it's in this open space area. It's not on the lots or the underdeveloped lots. It's all along the roadway there on Carriage Road, which is open space and the drainage area. And there have been trucks parked there. And you see the water, but often you see an oil sheen on that, because there's trucks leaking hydraulic fluid all in, all along that road there, in that area there, between the end of Carriage and the beginning of DeGrasse. So I think that, you know, so I know these are not necessarily concerns. Maybe they're concerns for the health department. Maybe they're concerns for the building department. Maybe they're not specific concerns to the planning board. But I think they speak to the, the level of respect that, that we've gotten from this, from this development. It, like I said, this isn't weeks or months. We've been dealing with this for years. So I, you know, I want to make, I just want to make note of that when you make your decision about, I understand, talking about the paving of Blue Castle. And I understand there's still lots on Carriage Road that are not, haven't been finished yet. And I also understand that there's, there's time that's still allowed for that. But that, the paving of that road and the drainage concerns there, I mean, you can see how, how difficult it is. And like I said, there's, there's a home on the corner there, and there's families that move around in that area. We're neighbors. We're part of that. And when, even when you come down to grass, you see that huge pile of construction debris along the edge of Carriage there. And we're neighbors. We live, this is where we live. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
I've learned so much from this development. Because this was all very unique. You know, people who weren't here, there was like, there was an established neighborhood. And a very clever gentleman got it permitted. There was pieces of disconnected lots, which got permitted as a subdivision. So that's why we have a lot of neighbors that are, they feel that, obviously, they're in the middle of a construction site. But go ahead, your name and your address, please.
Yeah. Joanne Dorsey, 86 Blue Castle Drive. And my, my house sits right at the end of where the paved part is on, at the end of Blue Castle. And then with, we have the dirt frontage in front of our house. And that's where we, over the last few years, we've had the massive water pooling there, which every time it rains, if it's really raining, then, you know, we get all that issue of the, the water just stagnant. And then the excessive amounts of mosquitoes all summer long, everything. And just, you know, just the smell. And it's just like it gets onto my front. And like, if you went after it rained, then you see it. If, when you mow on the lawn, you can see the, the particles of dirt all over the grass, because it's been sitting there soaked in it. And so I'm grateful for whatever you can do to, to help to get rid of that, just because it's been a horrendous past couple of summers. Trying to, I have my house sprayed once a month for mosquitoes, ticks, fleas. I have grandchildren that come to my house. And this past summer, we were not able to be outside as soon as dusk hit, because we'd be eaten alive, even though I've had it sprayed. They come back and they say there's nothing more they can do. They sprayed every piece of, they even went around the back, like, to the back of my fences, where the wood is, everything. They, they oversprayed everything. And it still didn't work. And like I say, that's the first time, since we've been there for 23 years, first time that I've had this issue. And I, I know construction takes time and you're doing that. And I have no issue with that. It's just, if this is, if you can come up with a solution to fix that forest, then I'd be forever grateful. That's, that's what I'm saying. I just don't, I, I just can't, I've had enough of it after this last summer with all the mosquitoes and just the mud. Can't step out there, you know, you're feed it just mud. And I like to walk every day. I go out there and I gotta go up on the people's lawn, whatever, to get around all these, this pooling of water everywhere. And I don't know what else to say. When you had mentioned something about our roof, I assumed it was our roof that you were talking about?
Yes, yes, Mrs. Dorsey.
We have gutters, we have downspouts. I, I don't know what else you would want us to put on there.
So, so the, to you, Madam Chair. So this is really great, Mrs. Dorsey, that you're here. First of all, two things. What we're proposing to correct is runoff in front of, on Blue Castle Road, Blue Castle Drive, excuse me, for the two houses to your left. So the two houses at the end of the Blue Castle Road, Blue Castle Drive, excuse me, before they get to your house. Okay? So the house that's under construction next to you.
Yep.
And the one next to that. That's going to help alleviate, alleviate, oh God, I want to say, at least 80% of your problem. Because it is a lot of water, and it doesn't really become a problem until it really ponds in front of, at the, at the border between your house and, and, and lot number 10, next door.
Yeah.
And I, I saw it this morning.
And when you see the road, when you come up the, that they've already paved.
Right.
When you get to there. And then right before, right when it gets like my house, they've made like a funnel of it. So it just, it comes up, and all of a sudden it narrows. Like, they just, and they have those hay bale things aimed that way. So it all just funnels right in front of my house.
He put the hay bale things there to try to look at how the water would flow and to try to corral that water. But, or to at least look at what the water flow would look like, so he could determine where the ponding problem is. So it, it was effective in helping, okay? It was effective in identifying some things about the flow on, on your side of the street. The point I want to make is, two, two points. Number one, the things that the planning board, and that I've recommended, the planning board can ask the developer to do, aren't going to solve 100% of your problem. Because he can't do anything about, nor can the planning board ask him to do anything about the road in front of your house. After you finish the edge of.
Well, when it's causing this issue with the flooding, when it's never there before.
Let me finish, so I can tell you. I, I just want you to be aware of it. Because I think this is great that you hear, you hear it from me and hear it while we're in public meetings.
They had no problem fixing at the other end of the road, though.
I'm, I'm just telling you what my opinion is.
It gave more rock and everything.
I, I don't know what you're referring to. I don't know if you're aware of what you're referring to.
He just wants to, he's right near his conclusion.
Okay.
So.
So to, so the, the part of the subdivision road, it's part of the road of, of, of Blue Castle Drive, where you live, isn't part of his responsibility.
Right.
Nor is it part of the planning board's responsibility to ask him to do that.
Yeah.
So there is some area of the road, and there's no drainage infrastructure in front of your house and past your house. So there is some runoff that's puddling in the little small potholes and stuff in the road.
No, more like a lake. I sent Evan pictures of it when it's raining.
I, I hear you. But it's on, if it's past his subdivision, it's not his responsibility. But I'll grant you, the lots nine and 10 next to you is part of his responsibility and has been contributing towards the ponding problem you have at your house, behind your boat, that low spot behind your boat.
Yep, right inside of it.
The second thing I wanted to tell you was, and to clarify what I meant, you have gutters and downspouts, which is great. But the water just goes right out onto the grass, instead of going under the ground and putting in a dry well. Then it won't go on the grass. It won't pond there. It won't create a pond for mosquitoes.
I've never had it. In the 23 years I've lived there.
Because it's, because it's been enough, it's, it's, it's percolated enough behind your boat in that low spot. It's percolated, it's been enough, at least, I guess. Maybe it'll, maybe it'll go back to the way it was. It's been at, at least something you were able to manage without having a big ponding problem. The Aquay Highlands subdivision has contributed to that problem, no question. We all agree with that. I'm just saying that you could fix some of your problem, and you could address some of your problem and help yourself a little bit by putting a dry well, at least next to that, as you drive in your driveway, the, the down spot on the left, by your garage door. So at least that would, I think that would be a good recommendation on my part to put a dry well there. You don't have to. It's up to you. I'm just telling you that when he fixes it the way the, the board wants him to, not all your problem's going to go away. Maybe it'll be satisfactory to you, and maybe be okay. I'm just telling you, he's not responsible for everything on that road past his subdivision. And that's the point I just wanted to make to you. I hope it returns to the way it was before, and, and you don't have that problem. We all do. Trust me. Mr. 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 Lehrer here doesn't want to get calls from you anymore, either.
I, I hope so, too, because, you know, doing the rainwater over your lawn is what we're supposed to do to, to get rid of the, the nutrients that, you know, are in the stormwater. But I see Mr. Dorsey coming up.
Yes.
Did you want to say something, too?
Very much so.
Okay. Do you want to use a microphone?
I'll sit with my wife and sit.
Okay. And these pictures, Mrs. Dorsey, these are from you, right?
Some, no, just the, just the nighttime one.
The nighttime one?
But the other ones are mine.
Oh, yeah, those are mine.
Okay.
And I, and I certainly hope the Dorseys are, are aware that we care about this problem to try to solve it for you. No question, to help you with this problem. Because you're not just making complaints out of the blue. You have, you have a real problem there.
But we can see the boat.
We see that.
We can see the boat. We have pictures of the boat. It's flooded at the boat. Yep. It's the boat. Sierra, okay. All right, Mr. Dorsey, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Timothy Dorsey of 86 Blue Castle Drive, Mashpee. And I'd just like to say a few things. I've been listening tonight. And with lot 10 is, that's where the pavement's going to end. And if water runs off into, and causes a problem on my property, it is Mr. Moran's responsibility to fix that. It states it right in the building code.
I, I would agree. No complaint. Agreed.
Oh, you agree with it now?
Oh, yeah. I, no, I, I agree.
And that if Mr. Moran, any way he can, can fix it, and I heard him say tonight, he's willing to pave the whole road, I'm for that also.
Okay, good.
So.
I'm, I'm just making the point that in front of your house.
Yep.
Is part of the subdivision road, that he does not have responsibility to pave. You understand that, right?
I'm not saying he does have responsibility to pave it. But if he paves right up into that spot and water's flowing into my yard.
Yep.
Then he's responsible for it.
Agreed. So we talked about in the field today, how he may have to extend the edge of pavement a little bit more, so that there's a small hump at the end of his subdivision road, so that water doesn't keep on going to your house.
Well, right now, he's built a hay bale, and he's directed it away from my property.
Right.
And if the road was to go the way it was supposed to go, it would be right over that hay bale. I mean, the road, the road right now is 23 feet wide. And then it, when it comes to my property, it curves away from my property with the hay bale, directing the water into the middle of the street. So if that hay bale and everything that's temporarily, temporarily causing the water, you know, to pile up wasn't there, then it 'll be in my front yard.
Right. The only point I was trying to make, Mr. Dorsey, was that there's runoff from the street in front of your house. That's not part of his responsibility. That does collect runoff and does get to your low spot.
Okay.
Eventually. Some, I looked at it today. It puddles right there.
Yeah.
So there's some of that.
He directed quite a bit of the water Monday. And so it's only been two days.
It, it needs to be corrected. We all agree it needs to be corrected. And I.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject. Mr. Dorsey would like us to pay, agree with you, the whole room.
Yeah. Thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So bringing it back, if there's anybody else from the public that would like to say anything? Because I'm gonna bring it to discussion with the board. As I see it, okay, that there's, there's some loam and seed that we want done in the retention areas. And what did you call them? Loam and seed on the sides?
On the walls.
Okay, all right. So when do you think you can have that done?
Well, we're, talked about 60 days.
Okay, within 60 days. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So then there were, there were two things about the paving, either paving the 180 linear feet, or paving, then this is the final coat, right? The 180 linear feet, or the entire Blue Castle Drive. So I agree with Dennis to do the whole drive. What do you think, Michael and John?
Well, if you get it done one time, it's done. So.
Yeah, I think.
Probably makes more sense to do it all at once.
I agree.
The whole thing. So would you agree to that, within 60 days?
I, I, I certainly agree. And I think that will work in Lawrence Lynch's schedule. I can't obviously speak for them to the extent that it doesn't. I can certainly report back right away to Evan, but I don't see any reason why it wouldn't.
Okay. Most likely, we're going to see you in May, after you figure out exactly what you want to change. And then you can report to us at that time on everything. How does that sound?
Sounds great.
Any other, any other, oh, sorry, I'm John.
Just for the, for the 17th, you may want a schedule of, for completion, at least a estimate.
Yeah.
Because you're going to run out of time. It's not going to be done by July.
July, yeah.
So what's, you know, what's your plan for beyond July? And when do you think it'll be completed?
Good point. So there's, there's an opportunity to amend the tripartite agreement past that July deadline?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess.
Yes, sir.
So one final thing, it would be helpful by 17th for you to come up, at least maybe consult with counsel, and speak to Mr. Moran about how you amend that completion date.
Yep.
For the record. It can be a vote, perhaps. You don't have to do anything else, but, you know.
Yep. I think it's going to say amendment to tripartite agreement.
I don't, what that means is there's three people that have to sign it, though.
Right.
That's the other part of it. So I just need to make sure.
So who's the third party? Is it the bank?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So you might want to touch base with your bank?
No problem.
Yes, well, I, I'm sure.
Just to be, just to, belt and suspenders take care of everything while you're at it.
All right.
Yes. Yes, I agree.
I, I'd like to know, one thing about that pile, I don't know what is, you have fences there and stuff. But when you clear that up, are you going to landscape that for open space? Or is it going to be?
Oh, where the building material is?
Where all the building material is.
Okay. So, right, there were two more. All right. So, so you have an open space lot, right? That's being used to store things. Has that open space been conveyed to the town?
The, the open space has, the items in question are fencing materials. We have a trailer there. They're probably within the layout of the road still, and not necess, there, they're probably within the layout of the road still, and not necessarily, there could be some in the open space. But we'll also be looking at doing what we can to, we have no other locations to put a lot of the material, but we'll be working on making that a better appealing-
Clean and looker.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just generally looking at the plan, none of the construction material is, I think, seemingly stockpiled on an open space parcel. Seems to be stockpiled on lots 14, 13, 12, and 11, on the Carriage Road, which are building lots, they're not open space lots. The open space parcels for the subdivision aren't, have been deeded to the Conservation Commission, however. So the town does hold a deed to those properties, but again, I just want to be clear that I don't believe there to be any mobilization of material on an open space parcel.
Thank you.
So, how would you, I've never worked in the field on this stuff, how would you make that more agreeable to the neighborhood?
I think we got to be able to continue and have the capability of continuing to operate our business and having equipment and the needed material and supplies to be able to continue on, rather than trying to have that be at some site which we don't currently own.
I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
Can you put up a temporary fence with some shielding or something?
Madam Chair, the biggest thing that stands out is the stockpiled material there. And today, Jacque, did you provide a picture of Carriage Road tip on the stack?
I think there's one there.
Today, there are a number of erosion controls along the edge of the road, and so I got a piece of it.
That was, yeah.
I think, I think it behooves the applicant to maintain, and unfortunately, there are erosion controls in the catch basins, as I asked them to install, and the catch basin's at the end of Carriage Road. Problem is, like any other thing that you have to do for erosion control, you've got to maintain it. So it works, but doesn't drain very fast. Why? Because there's a piece of filter fabric or silt sack in the catch basin to capture the sedimentation. So it's going to take some more O and M, some operation maintenance of that, so that there's not ponding at the end by the grass road. Also, it would be helpful, I think, as he did, I was shooting, I was looking for a picture, Jacque's team had placed straw wattles, you know, the straw sausage with the wrap around it, along the edge of the road, near some of those stockpiles, with leaving a gap so you can get in and out with vehicles and equipment. I think if he did that, that would eliminate, or excuse me, that would reduce the amount of sedimentation, so if you could put it on that side of the road, that's your east side of the road-
For piles of it.
-and continue to maintain it, I think that would go a long way to address the drainage problems on the grass road, we're just going to have to pay attention to it.
Yep.
Because you're not there every day, and I'm not there every day. But these people are there every day, and they're going to call me. So I'd like us to try to agree to do a regular maintenance schedule of that, do some regular maintenance every week to that, so that you're changing up the filter fabric, you're sweeping, ask your boss to sweep in the road today, sweep in the road every Friday to keep the sediment off of it, and taking care of things after storm events. So if it collects in the top of the catch basin filter fabric, and it clogs it, you just got to replace it.
Yep.
So that was, that was one of Ms. Ron Hawk's comments, was the maintenance of the hairy bales, so.
So you're saying, Ed, that it's, because it's on his lots, the construction material is properly there, you know, stockpiling it for the new construction, but he needs to manage the sedimentation and the pooling of water in that area?
Right.
And that would be sufficient.
Exactly. Erosion control and stormwater management of the catch basin, you've got to clean your, you've got to replace the erosion controls in the catch basin, they don't last forever. They're not designed, it's not designed to, it's doing what it's designed to do. When I see a ponding level, pictures, great pictures there, I see ponding above a catch basin that has filter fabric sediment, that's what we wanted it to do, right? It just doesn't drain very fast. But that's why you got to maintain it, you just can't ignore it for months, you got to maintain it. Which is one of the hardest things for any developer to get their people to do, no question. It's one of the hardest.
And check it after every rainstorm.
Every major rainstorm is supposed to check it and make sure it doesn't accumulate sediment now that will prevent it from draining well. So, again, I recommend silt sacks over filter fabric all the time. They drain better, they handle the load better, and it's easier to pull up the grate, maintain it, clean it, put it right back.
To address the concerns around the, just the construction equipment being there for so long, and it's going to be there for a while beyond, is it unreasonable to suggest a construction fence of some kind that can shield the equipment, so the neighborhood doesn't have to-
I would recommend the board go, first of all, John, it's not unreasonable, also, but I recommend you go by and look at it yourself, aside what we-
Yeah, you got to be able to get at the store, too.
Yeah, you got to get in and out, but there, but construction sites have-
Yeah.
We'd be taking fence down, day in and day out, to try to, you know, access the various-
You've got a block, one of those construction blocks, you put everything in a block.
Probably should take a look at it.
Not all materials, yeah.
Or all fit.
It's hard to do with a Mack truck and-
Yeah, but there are gates.
I would invite you to go look at it as well, just so you're informed, so that May 17th, you have a better name for it.
I go up there every time it rains, and check the thing.
Yeah, Dennis doesn't have to go.
I know the drainage, and I, sometimes I wonder, when you have those trenches for electrical, I don't see no tape around them. I'm scared, there's a lot of kids-
Yeah, I thought you had to put something up.
Sometimes it just opens, then there's a lot of kids down that area.
Yeah, the requirement-
I used to play in those areas.
The requirement is for trenches that are six foot in depth and larger, this is a 30-inch trench, which is extremely temporary, and it's on a lot entirely.
So it's on private property?
Yes.
That felt on me, kids, they got to walk around there and-
I'm always cognizant, and the cognizant of children that want to play in the area. Was it, we were all kids, we want to play. But there's a certain point where you have to speak to them politely and say, you know, you need to, not for your own good, I don't want things happening to you, and they've understood it, they're good kids in the area.
Ed, anything that people do, even trenches this shallow, is there anything that people do, construction sites do, to kind of warn people to stay away?
I mean, you could put caution tape up, saw horse with caution tape, something, or even a cone, a couple of cones would be fine, at the edge of the road.
I think if you guys could make some type of effort, I wouldn't want somebody to hurt themselves.
Easy enough.
You're waiting for the electric line to run in the conduit, right?
Correct.
Yeah, if it was run, then he'd be done already.
Yep.
I appreciate that. All right, so we're in agreement, within 60 days, you're going to re-loam and seed the retention areas along the streets, and pave the entire Blue Castle Drive.
Madam Chair, by May 17th. It's a little bit more than 60 days.
By May 17th.
Right.
Yes.
Sound good to everybody? Do we want a motion, or are we good with just this?
I would absolutely recommend you make a motion.
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? The Dorseys are discussing something, are you guys all set?
I have one, sorry.
Yep, you have to use the mic, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just wanted, it was just one other thing I meant to ask, is, just as a courtesy, when you go to, if you go to dig up anymore, going across Blue Castle at all, when you're going to fix these things, or to rewire or something, or move whatever you're doing in the future, if you wouldn't mind calling Dig Safe before you start digging? Because four times in the time period of this whole development, we, you've cut our telephone line, our landline, and that is directly how our security system is wired to that, so, you know, if there's a fire in my home, anything like that, it directly would call the fire department for me, or anything like that, or the police department, and I'm without that service until they can get down there and fix it, which is usually like a week or more sometimes to do that. But it's like, if somebody had just called Dig Safe, that wouldn't have happened.
Madam Chair, may I?
So, all right, so I have, I'm going to pause this, because we have a, we have a motion in a second about something that's non-related. So all in favor, is, there's no other discussion on that matter, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we got that out of, all right, so, yeah, so there's this thing that keeps happening to their house.
Yeah, I'd love to address that.
Okay.
So, a couple of months ago, I believe it was a couple of months ago, there was the need for the crossing because the water hydrant had to be moved in front of lot seven. Dig Safe was called, Dig Safe ticket was obtained, I didn't do the digging, we had a company do the digging, they discovered Dig Safe did not mark that crossing at all for, I believe it's telephone?
My telephone, yeah.
Yes.
It's the fourth time.
And I, your, my understanding is, your husband came and approached the person excavating, Mr. Joyer, and explained to him that he had had his telephone line cut three times previously by Mr. Bordalani, that was before my time. So, one, I didn't do it those other three times, I didn't do it this time, it was done by someone else that was excavating, and it was Dig Safe, there was, there is a ticket number of record, and to his, I can't say credit, but that was not marked by Dig Safe, and it was six inches down from the roadway, when it should have been two feet, really should have been marked, however. So my apologies that this occurred to you in the past, but this was not something that we did, it was prior to my having taken over the development.
Okay.
But thank you.
You're all done digging, though, aren't you?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so put, put May 17th on your calendar, folks. Okay. All right, and if that's it, I think we're good with that item.
Thank you, members.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Bye, bye-bye. Chairman's report, I guess I don't have anything in front that we're going to be before the Board of Selectmen on, on, on March 20th, to discuss amendments on zoning by Let's see, Town Planner's Report.
First, I wanted to begin dialogues relative to zoning articles for future town meetings that pertain to the sub lot that's below, we've already heard from me relative to tree protection bylaw that Karen submitted draft to me on, I should probably talk with her individually about that review and bringing it back to the board for discussion. Floodplain development provisions are going by way of the bylaw review subcommittee, and I guess a subsequent zoning article to match thereafter. Redevelopment bylaw remains, I think, in sights, is probably something we ought to think about for the future, especially as we get to the completion of the comprehensive plan, assuming that there'll be action items related to redevelopment priorities in the comprehensive plan. That's probably not an October proposition, this is going to require some work, so maybe looking forward to May 2024 for such a proposition.
Right.
And then, the last thing, I discussed this with the chair, and I, receiving a lot of-
Solar overlay, sorry, I made you skip one.
Oh, pardon me. Solar zoning overlay district, you know, again, we've discussed this kind of concept before, Falmouth Sandwich, other towns roll out their solar programs to encourage the use via overlay district, if that's still amenable to the board, if it's something you're interested in, I think there are a couple avenues we could take, besides what's going to town meeting this May, well, it could be a conservative approach, it could be more of an expansive approach, but if it was going to be allowed in any district outside of the C1 and C2, and the I1, I would suggest it should be by overlay district on parcels that meet certain criteria. That should follow a planning exercise and certain investigation of existing conditions on a variety of parcels. But if that's still something that's worth consideration to the board, that may also be, you know, a year-long proposition for May 2024 or later. I have been thinking a lot about the accessory apartment bylaw lately, mostly because we've received a few calls in town hall, folks purchasing properties with accessory apartments in them, and calling about whether or not they can live in it and rent the house, or live in, or rent both units. So I wanted to just approach the subject with the board for two different things. One, we currently don't allow anyone to, if they build an ADU, they're not allowed to live in the ADU and rent their house, they have to occupy the principal dwelling. So I think that's one issue that we should discuss modifying, to at least allow maybe an older person who's living alone in their house to live in the ADU and rent their house to a family. To go a bit beyond that, there could be a discussion relative to renting both units. I think it's important we at least tackle the first, to provide a little bit more flexibility and actually free up a home for a family.
There's none now, there's no flexibility now.
So-
I thought we allowed it.
We don't.
I honestly thought we allowed the owner, it's, it would still be an owner-occupied property, but the owner could live in the smaller unit.
I thought we did, too.
I thought we did. That was a fail.
Well, we tried to mirror very closely the originally approved accessory apartment bylaws by special permit attached to the house. We didn't mess around too much with kind of the occupancy requirements, so.
There's language out there, other towns allow it.
So I would posit that, at least in the short term, it might, it might be a bigger discussion about renting both units, but for an upcoming town meeting, I think that's a conflict we should rectify. And I'd be more than happy to produce a draft to that effect.
Good.
All right, so tree bylaw, I'm excited to see what you guys are crafting over there.
I'm waiting for Evan and John.
Waiting for me, I'm the bottleneck.
I'm waiting, waiting.
I'm the bottleneck.
Whenever he's ready, I am.
The floodplain development provisions that are separate from, you know, the FEMA regs, you know, do you have some idea about that?
Yeah, I have a written draft for that.
Okay, all right, yep, I think we should try to keep going, we'll know the temperature of the town, this town meeting, right? So we'll, Ed, you've probably been following us in the newspaper about all of that. So, the redevelopment bylaw, oh, does anybody have anything to say about the tree protection bylaw or the floodplain development provision before I go on? Okay. The redevelopment bylaw, the question I had on that was, obviously, it makes sense to me to put it in areas that you're going to sewer, right? But you're also increasing your zoning, and we have a flow-neutral bylaw, so we have to, we have to figure that out, and we have to keep to our flow-neutral bylaw to be eligible for that 0% state financing. So we just have to be careful that we, we get everybody's blessing, including if we have to go up to the state, so that we don't trigger something.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, so that was that puzzle. Anything else about redevelopment?
No.
I think that, you know, just as you're, as you're driving around town, if you see what they call a gray field, right, something that's underutilized, blighted, vacant, something that's all commercial, that, oh, like your Stop and Shop, right, you always wanted housing on top of Stop and Shop. You know, that kind of stuff, just make a short list. So Evan, can you send out those maps you did, too?
Yep.
Evan already did that, but if we want to add something?
I had those maps.
I loved them.
Are those the maps we saw at EDIC?
Exactly.
Yes, yeah, I've lost them, I'm sorry. Anything else about that?
No.
So the district, so instead of just using the boundaries that we have for commercial, industrial, et cetera, you kind of, you kind of draw areas that could dip into more than one zone. I'm wondering if you can get some information from the Cape Cod Commission? So the Cape Cod Commission on some of these larger solar developments, they require open space. So I think we should get a better understanding about how that works. And if that's something that a town can do. Or does it, does it only have to be, you know, is it only the Cape Cod Commission that can require open space or something like this?
Where got the town though?
I, I don't know. You know how like sometimes it's seen as mitigation and you can't do it? You can only do it through the Cape Cod Commission Act. But I'd like to see what they, they require for open space. And I know they're kind of cagey on that, but, you know, I don't think they should be. I think they should explain how on these other sites like in Falmouth and Sandwich, there's open space requirements from them. Anything else on the solar overlay district? And I think about the accessory apartments, I don't think there's the temperature right now in town to allow them on properties that are, are not owner occupied. I get a lot of feedback that we even let LLCs be considered an owner. So, or trusts or something like that. There's something, people give me a hot dog about that all the time. But that whole thing about, to me, what matters is that the owner is there. Whether, whatever unit they're in, I don't care. So. Anybody else have any comments on that?
I think we have to think about this because I'm sure many of you read the paper, Friday's paper about people who are coming here and paying cash for houses.
Oh, yes.
People who are, who bought houses and are just flat out renting them out as Airbnbs. We can't have a whole town full of Airbnbs. You know, we're, we're creating a caste system here of the very wealthy. And we're not leaving room for the middle.
Yeah, I, there's young people in my family, they rent Airbnb by month. They don't have a 12 year, a 12 month lease.
Rent an Airbnb by the month.
Yep, they can't find any place that has a 12 month lease.
That's sad.
Well, you lose your tenant rights. See, that's the thing. Okay, what's the next, anything else, Evan? There's something else on your list.
Yeah, just finally, I, there was, we had advertised for a second workshop between myself, my department, Conservation and Natural Resources Department for workshops on the wetland buffer proposals going before town meeting. There's one this up, this upcoming Saturday at the library at 2:00 PM. But the other was scheduled for April 4th at 5:00 PM in this room. The Board of Health needed this room for an advertised public hearing.
That's right.
So it's staying at the same time and same day, but we're going to the library. The website will be updated accordingly, but I wanted to make sure everyone knows that the April 4th workshop on the wetland buffer proposals will be at the library.
Anything else, Evan?
No.
Board member, anything else, Ed, before we move on?
No.
Okay. Board member committee reports, Cape Cod Commission, no report. Community Preservation Committee. Applications are available for the funding cycle that targets October town meeting. You can get the applications and through the town manager or on our website. And we updated the application to, some more background information about the applicant and the, and if they're doing any type of work with land, some information about that land. Little bit more on that. And then we're waiting for the, the Board of Selectmen to, to close the warrant before we get a copy of the warrant to everybody. But I think that they, I don't know, Michaela, if you want to speak. Michaela Wyman Columbo is on our select board and she's the liaison to the planning board. Have you finished on the warrant, all the community preservation articles?
No.
Okay, so.
Monday.
Monday, so if you're interested in that, Monday, the select board meeting, they'll be discussing more of the warrant. Including CPA articles. Design review.
No, no meeting.
Plan review.
Uh, plan review meant to review a proposal for a company that I'm the co-owner and president of. So I recuse myself for that process was not present for the.
Good idea.
Environmental Oversight Committee.
No meeting.
So is that committee functioning?
I don't even think there's a committee. There was, it's been months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Historic District Commission.
Just call me and we'll do it.
Sounds good. Brian sent me a couple of dates. I had emailed the chair and Dennis as planning board rep to meet to discuss some applications I'm anticipating to come through the historic district commission. As well as taking a glance at their rules and regulations, particularly as pertains to requirements to choose and approve of paint colors for commercial projects of solar on residential window replacement, things that are, that we currently need to convene meetings for, which are getting more and more challenging based on the composition of our group. So with the chair and with Dennis, we're going to take a look at an opportunities to improve efficiency of that commission.
Do you think you could do an administrative review?
That's what I'm going to be asking the district to consider for a limited scope of, of application types.
All right, oh, just to go back to our public hearing on April 19th. Have you invited the, this, some of these articles were by petition?
They have not yet received an invitation from me, but they will receive notice before the end.
All right, and could they join by Zoom if possible?
They could, that can be arranged.
And if somebody couldn't make it in April but could make a later date, would we be able to continue that public hearing?
You could, but isn't town meeting May 1st?
Okay.
And so I want to note too, we're within that like 30 day window of when, so if you recall, there was a two-two vote at a town meeting, three town meetings ago for a petition article. So we, the board within that window must make a recommendation or town meeting cannot consider the article. So do be here, I guess at least a quorum of the board and not an odd, an even number would be preferable.
And that could, that's a quorum of three.
Yes.
But we, we'll be fine. All right, and then I just under, oh, so, okay, is there any public comment? Okay, so we, I did get correspondence about a recent court finding. We have a policy about conduct during public comment and we have to retract that. It's, it's been negated and town council is looking at it to see what we can. I have a question, and if anybody else has a question for town council, I'd like to pass on. Is, we're the planning board, right? Can we, can we craft public comment to just address?
Issues.
What's, right, what's the issue? So when we have a public hearing and we call for a public comment during that public hearing, it's my understanding you can limit that speech to that matter.
And to a timeframe.
Right? So if you can just confirm with him that when we have public hearings about 5:32 Main Street, people can't talk about the solar farm by law.
That's the topic, right.
Right? So if that's so, can we call public comment on each topic that we want to hear public comment on? Even though they're not necessarily public hearings. So like, let's say we always want to hear public comment on the LCP, right? Can we limit that public comment during the LCP agenda item to LCP?
Right, I, I don't see why not.
Seems logical.
But if you could just double check with town councils so we don't get.
You would think if that's, that's what we're talking about on the agenda, that should limit the conversation so that it's on the agenda.
Makes sense.
I mean, that makes sense.
Right, so when I list public comment like that, like the way it's listed here, it opens the doors for everything. That's what that ruling said.
And that's the issue?
Yeah.
Well, if we want pub, yes, if we want public comment on land use issues only. When, when we put that public comment on a planning board agenda, does it limit it to land issue?
I just, I think it just suggests that you have public comment at that meeting. That's what it means, doesn't mean.
Right.
I think that's what it means. So if you could just see.
How would you have to have public comment on every single line?
And maybe we want to always have public comment about, you know, LCP. Or if we start to put, you know, bylaws on independently as an item, you know. Could take public comment on just that item.
Wouldn't, I mean, wouldn't it be easier instead of make, that'd be an awful lot of additional notes. Why wouldn't you say at the beginning of the meeting that we'll just public comment by agenda item, period?
I'd love to be able to put that on the.
Yeah, put it on this.
Uh, yeah.
Public comment by agenda item only.
See what town, I know town council's studying it, but.
See what they recommend.
The last thing is there's an FCC notification of cell tower application. What does that mean?
I received these email, they contain no data other than a file number and the location. I would imagine, if you recall, that Verizon representative met with the board informally to notify you that they intend to submit a special permit. They filed, this indicates to me that they filed their preliminary stuff to the Federal Communications Commission for their preliminary review and approval of the facility.
Okay.
So I would imagine subsequent to that federal review process, it would, that would be made part of a record for an application submission to this board and subsequently to the Cape Cod Commission. So that's probably in the works and in preparation for a, an application for permit from you.
Have they done their balloon test yet?
They did fly a balloon early. And we had discussed it, I think we had, I think the board had asked that they fly a balloon closer to the time that they make the application filing. I can't recall exactly, it's been in many months.
I think we, we didn't have jurisdiction to excuse them from the second one, okay. Well, if there's no other matters, I'd just.
You hire anybody yet?
Uh, no, posting is live though. I think it's open for one more week, so let people in your circles know.
I make a most adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everybody, that was good.